Could you lead us in pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you say the prayer?
Father God in heaven, we come to you today in the mighty name of Jesus, asking for your guidance. Asking for your will to be done here in the city of Montavista. God, not just for the city itself, but for every single citizen here. God, we ask for your provision, in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Nina, would you do roll call, please?
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Foster?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Segala?
Here.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
A quorum is declared.
Modifications to agenda?
Yes, Mayor, there is one modification to the agenda. Agenda. We would like to move H1A to the top of the agenda, please.
I move to approve the modifications to the agenda.
Second. Sorry, jumped the gun. It's been moved and seconded to modify the agenda to move H1A to first. Is there any more discussion? Nina?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, moving H1A to the top of the agenda.
So, H1A is Nina?
So, it's actually myself, Chelsea, Destiny, and Susan. So, this evening before you, counsel, is the Valley Three Theater Board, and we would like to call Colette and Ray Scaff up. We would like to present them with a few things. So, on behalf of the City Council Advisory Board, Carolyn, Susan, and all the volunteers, we extend our sincere gratitude to you for your generous contribution and for continuing to be very important in the Valley Three Theater. We are reminded once again, what a wonderful, caring, and loving community we live in. Your generous donation of $40,000 allowed for us to purchase a new laser projector to replace the projector that broke and have made it possible for the Valley Three Theater to reopen. We have not only made a huge impact, you have not only made a huge impact on the Valley Three Theater, but an even bigger impact on our community. Now, all of our community members will be able to enjoy not only films, but the historic downtown arts and films that will be brought to the theater, and hopefully soon, live production. In a show of appreciation, the City of Montavista City Council members and the Valley Three Theater Board members would like to present to you this plaque. We would also like to inform you that you will be getting your own walk-a-thing. So... In front of the Valley Three Theater, Chelsea has gotten a hold of a contractor, and in front of the Valley Three Theater, the sidewalk will be ripped out, and the star with your names will be...
Oh, no.
Ray and Colette, you have truly made a difference in all of our lives.
Don't feel sorry for me. We just gifted the whiskey barrel.
So, Chelsea presented to Ray and Colette a lifetime membership of free movies to the Valley Three Theater.
For just a couple bucks, I got my pick. That's a bargain.
You've made a huge difference in all of our lives, and we really appreciate everything you guys have done.
We're very happy to do it. And we love this community. It was important to do.
You know, the City of Montavista cannot thank you guys enough. There is no words to express, you know, our gratitude. So, thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
It didn't take us much to decide. Like I said, we just dipped into the whiskey barrel and then...
You don't believe that. No, Ray.
Wow. That's neat.
Yes. We very much appreciate this. Thank you. It's an honor to be able to do it for the entire community.
All these for a couple bucks.
Perfect.
Yeah. Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
So, now that everybody's really happy and in a great mood about this, I'd like to request the city's permission to tear up the sidewalk to the star. So, if that could be addressed at some point, please.
We can make a motion about that.
So, I think she's going to do that.
So, guys, you guys make a motion that you all kind of, maybe all of a sudden it was cool, but...
Yeah.
So, I would motion to approve the demolition of the sidewalk to replace it with the walk-a-thing for Ray and Colette Scaff.
All right. Second.
To allow the theater to remove the sidewalk to put this new one in. Is there any more discussion? Nina?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to allow for the theater to put in the walk-a-thing star.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chelsea. Executive session. I would move right here.
I'm moved to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney and outside counsel under CRS Section 24-6-402, parentheses 4, parentheses B, for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions on the postponed item from 9:30, 2020, for special review use at 212 Adams Street.
And I would second.
Okay.
Nina, do I need to follow up with this?
Yes, you do, please.
Okay. A motion has been made to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-4024B for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E. Out here. Or Nina?
We need a roll call.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. Is there any more discussion? Nina?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Foster, you cannot vote on this being that this is your project. So, Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to go into executive session.
Do you read this here or in there?
In there.
The time is now 7:53, and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were councilwoman Martha Locke, Mayor Dale Becker, councilman Gary Johnson, councilman Victor Segala, city clerk Unida Vance, city manager Forrest Newberg, city attorney Mike Trahill. Okay, and for the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of the matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none? Next item.
Approval of consent agenda is your next item here?
Approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda and approval of the council payables.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting, September 17th, and a renewed approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Nina?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda and accounts payable.
Okay. Now, I'll go to citizen comments and special, just citizen comments. Scheduled appearances? We don't have any, right? Okay? So, citizen comments. City council welcomes your un-scheduled comments. Please limit the comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this meeting.
So, I just have a very briefing on the 212 Adams thing and an updated petition. Do you want me to do it now, or do you want to wait till that item comes up?
Wait till it comes up?
Yeah.
We'll wait till it comes up.
All right.
It is supposed to carry.
Does anybody else?
I can't disappoint you all.
No, you can't.
Hello, counsel. Hello, everybody. I just wanted to say parks, everything looks beautiful. Trash is being picked up out there, and Rob and his team are just doing an exceptional job with the people they have on hand. They've been trimming trees and doing all of that work and hauling stuff up and doing a wonderful job. So, kudos for them. And then, of course, I have to bring up my pet project. Trash is still on Second Avenue, piling up. Nothing has changed. So, please...
They do have a follow-up court date on October 20th.
Are you serious?
There's really nothing that can be done until the judge says you can get something done.
Okay, well, at least it's making progress. Thank you for letting me know that. When the rats start invading our neighborhood, you will hear about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Margot. Anybody else? Okay. Public hearings. Postponed item from 9:30, 2020, special review use Foster 212 Adams Religious Institute.
Jim's going to hand, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Jim's going to give you guys the updated petition, and I don't know that I'm going to read everything that I wrote. Raina Bowser, 70 Pioneer Road. Our business is located at 157 Adams in Montavista. I really had just bullet points of what I presented before. I'm not going to do that. The one thing that's new is... I thought I would just point out that the definition for business, commercial business, is... I'm lost, sorry. Commercial business is defined as an entity that sells goods and/or services for profit, and a church does not fit this widely accepted definition. And they are asking that this church be placed in a commercial business zone. We have all the other reasons that have already been done there for your approval, and that's really all I have.
Thank you, Raina.
So, I would make a motion to table this matter of Foster at 212 Adams Street until the next meeting on October 15th, and direct staff to provide options for counsel to consider.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Nina?
Counselor Johnson?
Nay.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one with one may, three yes.
Just an alarm.
Well, it looks like we are on staff proposals now, or reports.
Actually, if we please, counsel, I do not have a report tonight. I think I spoke at length Tuesday.
Nina? City clerk?
Thank you for Tuesday.
Good evening, counsel. So, I'll make this very brief. Just wanted to give you a quick update with our courts. Our court systems are running very smoothly. The judge between the judge and city attorney, Mr. Trahill, we have made giant progresses in allowing for a lot of the defendants to pay for their actions by doing useful public service. With that being said, unfortunately, it does not bring in the money that we had seen last year. So, we are down in funds from last year, not just because of the useful public service, but also due to COVID, people just not paying their citations. One thing that we want to make sure that we do is help those in need, but yet uphold the law as well. So, that is something that myself, the judge, and Mr. Trahill are looking into as well. Hopefully, we'll have that discussion at the next court date with the judge. Dog tags are down, or dog licenses are down. So, we did put an ad out in the paper for everybody who lives within the city limits of Montavista. Please register your dog. It's $7 per dog. Need a copy of your rabies vaccination for the dog. And if you just come to the city clerk's office, we can register your dog and give you your tags on the spot. Other than that, thank you all for allowing us to purchase the plaque to give to the Scaffs. I do believe that they made a huge difference in our community, and thank you for honoring them with that. Any questions?
I do not have. Thank you, Nina. Nika, Superhero Kids Connection. Well, kids got the best of you.
Very slow. Still trying, though. Okay. All right. Good evening. So, it's like the same story every time I come. So, I thought I'd give you a quick breakdown of kind of how things are running. Like I mentioned before, that we're running four programs in a day. So, with that, we have a morning program that's running from 7:30 to 11:00. We have anywhere from 19 to 14 kids, depending on that day. We have an afternoon program that's running from 12:15 to 3:45, and we have anywhere from 12 to 18, depending on the day. In the middle of those two programs, we're running a separate program at Bill Metz from 11 to 12:15, and we have at least 25 kids in that group. The reason that one's held at Bill Metz is because it's the staff, employees of the school district. There are kids that are in third through fifth grade that can't go to their parents' classrooms during lunch hour, during that break of that morning and afternoon cohort of kids. And then, after all that's said and done, we have our after-school program that operates from 3:45 to 5:30. And that program is currently serving over 50 kids each day for that short period of time after school. Our main priority with every one of these groups of kids are homework help and academic support and making sure that they're not falling behind at all because the schedule is really chaotic for them. And with that, I just want to let you know that the school district, I don't think they've made the official announcement to the community or parents yet, but I was notified their first quarter will look, or their second quarter is going to look exactly like the first quarter. So, Kids Connection will still be supporting Bill Metz with their full-day programming through the second quarter through the end of December, meaning we're going to continue running the four programs every day. We do have middle schoolers that come every other day, depending on which day they're scheduled to be home, so they add to those numbers. And they're looking at over 40 kids returning from online school to in-person session because they were having a hard time keeping up with the online academy. So, we'll have some additional kids coming into some of those programs, but I'm not sure exactly what that's going to look like yet. All of those kids do return on Monday, and I'm just waiting for parents to contact us if they need our support. Let's see. With that, I just finished up the second session of our CCL training. It's through the Center for Creative Leadership. This one was really great and came at the perfect time because it was mainly focused on effective communication and how we can be better listeners and as a leader, guide our staff in a better direction and allow them to solve their own problems without me as supervisor jumping in and solving them. That's a very hard one for me because if somebody gives me a problem, like you need to do this. So, this one's really challenging me as a person, but it was very insightful. And other than that, that's really all I have going on. If you guys have any questions for me, that's all.
It's ready to go during your free time.
I'm going to search for free time.
Any questions for Nina? We really, really appreciate what you do for this community. Your involvement with the youth is what will change this community.
I hope so.
And I appreciate that.
I hope so. That's our number-one goal.
Well, you do a great job on that.
Thank you. I will relay that message to the staff because I just heard my little sheep. Thank you.
Thank you, Nika. You're up, young lady. Do you want me to call you Jaime, or?
Jamie.
Or Jamie.
Kim.
So, I'll keep this somewhat short. We reopened sports with the youth. Nothing with the school has opened yet, or they started opening. But we reopened with youth football and volleyball. So far, we've had two football games, following COVID restrictions, obviously, but they're going well. We have 16 kids in third and fourth grade and 25 kids in fifth and sixth grade. We are playing other Valley teams, Alamoosa Delmar, but we're not traveling outside of the Valley right now. We start volleyball this Saturday, our first game. For volleyball, no one else in the area, in the Valley, is playing youth, so we're only playing Montavista versus Montavista. We have a total of three teams with nine players each. And then, coming up, we have a youth basketball camp, October 23rd through the 25th, hopefully at the high school. And our plan after that is to continue with youth basketball, but we do have to wait for all the other leagues to decide that they want to play so we have people to play against. But with Chassa opening up football now, I'm thinking that our January might be back to youth basketball. We hope. That's all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kim. Council committee, state commission, council reports. Mr. Foster, you got any reports?
I do not have any reports.
Mrs. Locke?
I'd just like to say that the chamber continues to move forward with, they've already started a committee for next year's Sloop of the Cranes because that was such a big success, such a big deal. So, that's good. The optimists are still moving forward with several projects. Invite anybody who has a positive attitude, who doesn't say phrases like, "Well, it's always been here. It's always been like that here. Good luck changing it." Any of those phrases, if that's what comes out of your mouth, then you enjoy yourself at home because the optimists are a positive people that are looking for solutions while recognizing problems. I'd like to go even further than that and just say that I think Montavista has handled this year, which has been a challenge, in a very good way. I know that there have been squabbles and there have been, you know, things here and there, but we're human. That's going to happen. Overall, we've had a tough year. We've got a tough election coming up. And I just hope that we can, as a community, come together and understand that if we polarize ourselves, it matters not who's in the White House. We have already made our own grave. So, let people vote who they're going to vote for. Don't argue about it. State your opinion. If there's somebody that you had coffee with before you knew who they were going to go vote for, have coffee with them again. You're still friends. That's about all, God.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Not much. Just one thing that I think is critically important that I want to get out to my, am I on camera here? To the community, and that is a simple thing you've probably heard about before, but it's called physical fitness. And not because of what I've done, but because of an inspiration that I got from somebody pretty close to me. In fact, he's sitting next to me. Counselor Segala has taken upon himself, he hasn't talked about it much, but I pulled it out of him the other day, how much he has done in terms of walking, running, exercising, watching what you eat, everything else. I mean, you're looking at, I mean, the guy looks great, you know? But I just wanted to encourage the community because I look around, and, you know, I'm one of them too. But I look around, and I'm not looking at you. I look around, and there's a definite need for folks to... I think it's probably improved somewhat with folks maybe getting out more. I'm not sure. But I want to ask you one thing. What is the, you told me one thing, and it was the mileage that you've walked. What is it in the last couple of months? You've got it on your app. Tell me that.
Since April, so in September, I walked 240 miles.
Just in September?
Just in September.
So, we don't want to talk about going all the way back to...
April, May, June, July, August, September.
Well, he could have been somewhere by now.
You know, I love Montavista so much, I just dare to stick around.
And it has had tremendous effect. But what I appreciate is, you know, I didn't read this in the paper because you published it. It's just, you know, you... It's just, you know, you and I have talked and it came up, and I was so impressed going through the app. And you have Mr. Segala's email on the website, so if you want to find out about that app and what you need to do in order to, you don't have to just, you know, stop eating altogether or turning your life 180 degrees. You just pick something and start working on it. And this guy is an example of that, and I know him well enough to, I know how committed he is to the town, to his family, to his kids, and everything else, but now he's taken up an issue where, you know, I've got to do something. And it wasn't just talking, actually, and that's my whole report for the night, and I appreciate you, Victor, and I appreciate you as an example. The rest of the community now get out there and do something about it. The rest of you.
Victor?
So, I really don't know what to say. I'm not perfect by all means, so, just want to put that out there for everybody right away. I am one of those people that even when I was involved in the street and the gangs and everything else, I was, I was never one of those people to go out talking and when I'm by myself, no, 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 that wasn't me, okay? That wasn't me. I never said that. I was always one of those people that whether I was by myself or whether I had a whole gang of my friends with me, I would always speak the same thing. I just, it was who I was. And that's kind of what led me here to this seat because I had a lot of friends in the past, and the old me, you know, that used to talk about this and talk about that and this and that, and I tell them, quit talking and do it, right? Quit talking and do it. I don't know how many times, when I gave my life to God, people would always still complain about the city, about this, about that, about people, about situations, and I used to tell them, well, do it, do something about it. Don't just talk about it, do something about it. And I put my foot in my mouth when all this came up in, you know, city council. It was like, Victor, practice what you preach. Oh, I put my foot in my mouth, you know, and, but I took it upon myself to be part of the solution, to be part of that change, instead of saying, what's wrong with that? What's going on there? You know, I'm like, well, why don't I do it? How come I just don't step up and how come I don't do it? Because I always tell people, how come you don't do it? Right? How come you don't? You're the one bringing it up. Why don't you do it? So, that's why I'm here, because I would always continue to tell people, do it, man, come on, do it. Now, it was my turn, so, do it. Don't just say it. Do it. That's all I have to say.
Well, you're an inspiration, Victor. I really appreciate you and respect what, where you've been, what you've done, and where you're at today. You're an inspiration, I think. Okay? And I'll be glad that you're on council. I only have a couple of things, well, three. So, I spent two weeks away. Thank you, Victor, for stepping up and taking the...
Thank you for the opportunity.
...to see my new granddaughter, who is very healthy and great and had a great time being gone. Outside, it was hot, very hot down there. But the census, for those people out there still, it's still going, it goes to the end of October, please answer your door if they're knocking on your door. It is so crucial to this Valley to be able to get the funding we need for the programs that a lot of people need, and it's very, very important that you answer the door. They're not going to ask you for anything but some information, and as I was told the other evening, you don't even have to give them your real name. You can make a name up. They just need the numbers. So, please, make sure you have done the census, or if they knock on your door, be sure and answer it. And also, in the newspaper today, it was stuck, well, I guess it came in the mail and it was stuck in the newspaper, but it's about the mill levy for the fire department. This is something really crucial to our community. Fire department is a lot, and if you read through this, it's kind of hard to kind of decipher a little bit, but not too much, but the Monavista Fire District or whatever they call themselves, I think it's Monavista Fire District, they haven't gotten any, they haven't raised any funds in 25 years, and they're a very important part of this community. So, I would encourage you to vote yes on 6/8. And with that being said, we will adjourn the meeting until October 15th.
Recede.
Recede the meeting. We will recess the meeting till October 15th, 6:00 PM.